Go ahead.
All right, folks, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order at 6:07 PM on Wednesday, October 6th. And, uh, I forget, do we need to get a motion to start the meeting? How's that work there, Dana?
You called it to order, so.
Oh, sounds good. Roll call. Okay.
Commissioner Ian Dernan.
Here.
Odie Curvin.
Here.
Bill Leester.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Alrighty, thank you so much, Shelley. All right, folks, so we'll go ahead and get started with, um, item, uh, business item 1A, which is consideration to approve the September 15th, 2021 meeting minutes. And, um, let me take a look real quick here. Uh, so yes, so can I get a, a motion to approve those minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve those minutes from September 15th, 2021.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Curvin, and can I get a second on that?
Yeah, I second that motion.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Leester. All right, and all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and, uh, motion passes to approve those meeting minutes. All right, and then we'll cruise right along here to item 1B, consideration of case number SP 21-01, a request for major site plan approval of a drive-through coffee shop, otherwise known as the Copper Bean Coffee in the C2 Intermediate Commercial Zoning District pursuant to zoning code 14-9-5 for the properties located at 1010 and 1020 East Ash Street. Assistant parcel numbers 208-05-293 and 294. And with that, we'll go ahead and, um, let you take it from here, Dana.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Dernan and Commissioners. I appreciate your time this evening and your consideration of this item. This is a site plan review, uh, and to my knowledge, it'd be the first that's come before the Planning and Zoning Commission, definitely since, uh, since I've been, uh, working with you. So really quick, just to let you know, a site plan approval is required for commercial, any new building on a commercial property, uh, is as the ordinance is written. And then within that ordinance, I don't know if you had an opportunity to take a look at it, but it does itemize that number of different things, uh, that we look at in site plan reviewing, including, uh, compliance with the zoning code, um, transportation, uh, impacts, surrounding property impact, stuff like that. It's a, it's a good code and the city has a good process in place, uh, for reviewing these types of proposals, so I, uh, advise to get familiar with that ordinance. So there are two options, a major or a minor site plan. A minor site plan, anything that's not a major, uh, and minors are done by administrative, and I do that simply by the issuance or approval of a building permit or whatever request is before me. Uh, again, if it has a, uh, new building, new commercial building, that kicks it into a major site plan and requires the Planning and Zoning Commission's, uh, review and approval ultimately. Uh, just to let you know, before we get to this point, we do a TAC review. The TAC is the Technical Advisory Committee, uh, assembled by the city and basically different department heads of the city or their, uh, appointees and also our public utilities, uh, like APS, Southwest Gas, and then also other entities. For instance, if this were near, uh, uh, Gila County property or a budding or using Gila County property anyway, obviously Gila County would be also be a part of that review process and also ADOT in this situation. ADOT did, uh, give preliminary or approval of, of this, uh, design as it accesses the US 60. And again, just if you have time and you haven't already, uh, take a look at that section of the code for details for future, um, uh, proposals that you'll receive. Really quick, I'll just touch on the location, right here in the middle of the site, these two lots that you see, uh, are being requested. It is right next, just east of the overpass on Ash Street that used to go to, or that goes to the, uh, old elementary school, our middle school. Um, this light, uh, red color is C2 zoning district. This blue color down on the bottom is TR or Transitional Residential Zoning District, and it's a transition from, uh, commercial districts to residential districts. This light pink, which is hard to make out up here, uh, north of Ash and, and north of the half block there is NS or Neighborhood Services. And that's also a very similar, um, transitional district to, to our adjacent R16, which is Single Family Residential District, and then the brown right here is R4. So we get the luxury of looking at most all our districts in this one vicinity of this property. Uh, this is a blow up of the site. Again, it's two lots. Um, one of the conditions of approval that staff is recommending and would require the applicant to join those lots, um, if down the road. Go ahead. If for some, and why we want those lot lots joined, or there's actually two options. You can join the lots or give cross-access easements, which is kind of cumbersome and a lot more involved than just, uh, removing the common lot line, that red line down the middle. Uh, and why we do that is because either of these lots developed would not be able to stand alone and meet their own parking requirements, their, their depend, and possibly utility connections across parcels and so forth. So for that reason, we want it all contiguous, so we know nothing can get sold to another user without the idea of a, uh, a plan to continue to use that property together or develop them so they can function independently. Uh, but the idea for this particular project is that would it all work together? They share parking, they share access, they share utilities and, and so on. Uh, so the applicant has agreed, yeah, they'll just, I think they're actually in the process of deleting that common lot line, and that's a simple process with the county tax assessor. All right. Um, this is the site plan, uh, that we were just looking at. North is up again, it's a one-way. So we have Fifth Street, uh, the property is located at the southwest corner of Fifth Street in Ash. Uh, Fifth Street is proposed to be the entrance for the property. It is, this proposal is for a drive-through coffee shop. Currently existing on the site is a building that you saw on the, sorry, got ahead of myself there, on the corner here was previously used as a retail business, basically, or a pawn and gun shop, um, and now being proposed to add, and that, well, now being proposed to convert that pawn and gun shop into a, uh, office facility and, um, and then develop the, uh, this proposed new building here, which is basically the coffee shop or the coffee drive-through facility, as well as locate, uh, separate storage structure adjacent to it for, for storage of goods on the property. So again, the idea is that either, uh, every, all access is from Fifth Street and you, they can either come through, take a parking spot, go to their, uh, office space and use, utilize that space, or, uh, and we have parking also along the, the bottom of the, the south end of the site plan there, uh, parallel parking and then additional parking spaces adjacent to the existing building. But it's keeping these drive aisles clear, so we've got one way through to these parking spaces or back south to the alley and to exit down off of Monroe Street, or they get into the stacking queue to go through and, and purchase their coffee and then exit on Highway 60. Um, that's the most of it. We are, uh, allowing the off-site location of trash enclosure or trash storage, uh, shown right here in the alley, in the city's alley, and, and we find that appropriate as alleys are typically used for trash collection. Um, so no reason that that would be any different in this circumstance. Uh, the applicant's proposing to pave all of these surfaces as well as create these landscape planter islands in areas. Uh, the coffee shop facility is strictly for, uh, the preparation of coffee. There's no actual indoor seating or anything like that. There is a walk-up window, uh, should people come over from the high school or adjacent areas and, and one of pedestrians would like to, uh, order. Otherwise, it'd be strictly drive-through. The parking does meet our minimum parking requirements. I think it exceeds by a parking space or two. Uh, with the use of the office, and there's a quick overlay just to show you how it all up, uh, functions, um, together. Uh, the existing trees on the site would obviously be, uh, if they are located on the property, they'll likely be removed as mo- majority of the site, except for those landscaped areas, are shown for paving. Here's the building elevations. This would be the south-facing elevation or where the, um, where the, uh, sidewalk shows access into the, um, building. It's about a 228 square foot footprint. Um, north side has, again, this window for access or for, um, pedestrian orders and then additional windows. Uh, west-facing wall solid would be electrical, uh, and then the east-facing, uh, elevation would be the pickup window. One of those two windows would be the pickup window for the facility. Uh, one of the conditions of approval included a idea for landscaping or minimum requirement for landscaping. We went ahead, we did conversations with the applicant, uh, to look at, okay, what's the minimum amount of landscaping that will appear to be finished and, and look nice from our rights of way and in, here to the project, so this is what we have. And this is a deviation from what you see in our, uh, the staff report, uh, and staff would recommend this, uh, condition in lieu of the recommended, uh, plantings, two large trees and about 23 shrub spread throughout those planter areas. Um, so with that, uh, the staff is recommending, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission motion to approve SB 2101 with the conditions listed, uh, in the staff report, with the exception of the landscape quantity that I just discussed. And, uh, I did provide that to the applicant, they have not followed up, but I'd be happy to, uh, if Stacy's in the audience today, she might be able to speak to that. Uh, be happy to respond to any questions.
I have a question, this is Bill. Bill?
Bill, go ahead. Abel? Yeah, go ahead.
Just a kind of a general question, you know, even, it just seems like that's still a lot of landscaping. I went over there and looked at that lot and imagined another building on it roughly the same size as the one that's here, and that, there's not, I don't know where you're going to put all those trees and shrubs. I just not want to, not want to revisit that, I don't know.
We do have a plan, Bill, I can provide you that kind of shows the spatial arrangement of those in scale.
That'd be great.
Dana, can you hear me?
I can.
Hey, this is Commissioner Curvin. I had a question, um, and looking at some of those pictures, especially the aerial views, putting picture where the, where any traffic lights might be. I'm just looking at Highway 60 like that, and I'm, I'm concerned probably more with entering 60 from the business. The speed through there, I think, is 30, so it's, you know, it's a, a good slower rate, but, um, that's just one, one thing I was thinking about.
So, uh, Commissioner Curvin, if I could, um, get clarification, it's the exit, so you, you can see the aerial right now?
Yes.
With the site plan?
Yes.
Exit being right here? And I'm sorry, and what's the concern?
Well, just that cars entering the highway, and that's, you know, how people drive through, it's a busy highway, um, I'm not sure where the, where the, where the closest lights are, you know, uh, traffic lights, um, on either side there. I'm just trying to get a picture of what that's going to be like.
Got it. Thank you very much. So ADOT, keep in mind, did review and grant approval of this, and their request was actually to have egress only, to exit on the property. This particular map, uh, blow up shows there's a light at Third Street, and that's the closest lit intersection to the property. Currently, that property does have that same curb cut location, and if it were to be used as a gun and pawn shop again or a retail establishment, it would have two-way access, both ingress and egress. Um, ADOT was happy to see, they recognized that, uh, drive, coffee drive-throughs can have a lot of stacking at times or stack, and that's why they prefer to be an exit only.
Okay.
And to build that new building on the property to be able to serve, uh, the driver's side. Uh, but it has been reviewed for traffic safety, uh, as well by our city engineer, uh, who does our traffic engineering and, uh, has been found to, to be a safe design.
Good, sounds, sounds great, thank you.
I don't have any questions at this time. At this point, I would love to hear, you know, Stacy, if you wanted to share with us, I mean, it sounds like something really exciting, I think it's some exciting news for the community, so if there's anything you'd like to say, we'd like to open it up. Is that all right for us to do that, Dana, or is there anything else?
And I apologize, I'm not clear on who's in the audience or if Stacy's there and, and or on Zoom, um, and she wished to make a presentation, please.
Sounds great, thank you.
Hello. Thank you for having me. I am the only one in the audience, actually, Dana, so, uh, I welcome, uh, your guys' questions if you have any, you basically have the general layout of what I'm doing, and I appreciate you guys, uh, looking at this today for approval. I, um, just to give you a really quick background, when I purchased this property, I was actually going to put the drive-through in the existing building that's there, and I was going to add it towards the back of the building. And, um, with the ADOT conversations and what we were going through with permitting, um, one of the concerns was obviously the backup. And it was actually going to, the ingress was actually going to be from Highway 60 and the ingress was going to be on the fifth. And obviously, the concern at that point would have been the stack up into the highway for the people waiting in line, so, um, they, they were concerned and, but they were willing to accept it. And by the time that my contractor and I really looked at it, one of the things that ADOT said is, "We want you to understand that we're going to go ahead and, and approve it this way, but if, if it gets to be a problem, we're going to ask you to, uh, put a building, construct a building on the empty lot and do it the other way." And so when I sat with my contractor and told him what they said, and he says, "Well, why don't we just do that?" And I went, "Well, because of the cost, I wasn't planning on spending that money." And he said, "Let me run some numbers." And so by the time that he ran the numbers, I was only, it was only going to cost like $20,000 more because it was the fact of getting an older building and changing it and turning it into something it wasn't, that was actually going to be almost just as expensive as just building a brand-new facility. And now this has allowed me to not have to worry about the future of that, of the traffic stacking up into the highway. So it's, it's been a year that we've been doing this now, um, with the, the changes because, you know, from taking something that was pre-existing and modifying it, and now I have a brand-new building being built and changes to, the parking situation was a little tough to get across because the, the lot is somewhat limited, but we've done it and we've gotten here, and, um, I'm excited about it. The only concern I have today at this point is just the landscaping, like Bill asked. It's a lot of landscaping they're asking me to do in a very small amount of space. And I was just actually talking, I did respond to Dana, by the way, if you look at your email, Dana, you'll see. I was actually asking, I don't know if any of you are familiar with my business, that's catty-corner to this particular location, but it's a real estate office, and I just completely redid the front of that area, the front and side yard, and I specifically did it to the fact that I wanted it to be green. I didn't want to have any water usage, so it's artificial turf, um, decomposed granite, rocks and cacti. And I would love to be able to do something similar at this location, so I didn't have to always be concerned about watering, the water usage, the maintenance. I feel that I can still make it look very nice with, uh, the ground cover and cacti, but that's my only concern at this point. And if, if I have to put in trees and shrubs, I guess I will, but it's just not something I was necessarily planning on doing, but that's the only thing I can ask right now, is that the landscape plan not necessarily be trees and shrubs. I mean, we are trying to save water in Arizona, so I thought, why not?
Um, and thank you, Stacy, for letting us know that. What are your thoughts in terms of the cost of these current recommendations in terms of the landscaping?
That's the other thing, um, the, the rocks, when you, when you own land, rocks are free. So I can go, I have property, I can go and get rocks. Sorry. That's one thing. But, um, the decomposed granite, obviously, and the cactus, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to purchase, but it's going to be prob, in my opinion, it'd be a lot less expensive to purchase those items than it would be the, the shrubs and the trees, depending on what I buy, obviously. Everything, you know, costs, it just depends. But in the long term of the water usage and the maintenance of the property, I feel that it would make way more sense for me to not have to water trees and shrubs. If I had to, if, if I had to put trees and shrubs, I'll be honest with you, I'm going to, I'm going to definitely lean towards more desert, so that I, it's not something I'm consistently having to water.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, any other questions from fellow commissioners at this time?
Well, I think the, the drive-through, um, portion of it is really good and a, a great amenity, and I know, like, a lot of places nowadays, and even here in Globe, the Burger King's pretty fresh and then people are wrapped around it, so, um, and they're on the go more and all, and I think it'll be a really good concept. I'm just curious, what, um, like hours are you, will you be open every day and how, how early will you open?
As of, as of right now, I don't plan on being open on Sundays. I do have someone begging me to, but, um, as of right now, I'm not planning on Sundays. Um, my Monday through Friday most likely will be open at 5:00 in the morning, and, um, I, originally, I had actually only planned on being open till early afternoon. There's a chance, though, I might stay open a little bit past in the late afternoon, and if I do, I might have a little lunch break time in between there, um, so to speak, so split shift. And, um, the latest I'll be open that I can expect would probably be 4:00 to 4:30. So if I did decide to ever stay open the entire time, depending on what I see is fit for our, our area, because, you know, every, every, every city, every area has a different type of, uh, timeframes that are different. Um, Starbucks in Globe or in, at the fries, they actually are not busy at all in the morning and extremely busy in the afternoon. And I believe that has to do with the fact that they're not drive-through. My thought is, is I'm going to have a, a lot busier mornings than they would. I'm not sure necessarily what the, what the afternoons will be like. But I also would like to get some of the high school business as well, so I want to be open during their lunch hour and possibly when they get out of school as well.
Yeah, I was thinking later in the day, shift workers, there's a lot of them with the mining here and.
Right.
And they swing, you know?
Right. And I also just have a lot of, you know, friends and family that they just like an afternoon pick me up, so I, I do believe it's probably going to be something that is popular.
Thank you.
And I don't know what your thoughts are on this here, Dana, so I was just looking at, um, kind of like the, the Google Images view of the property across the street, which is the old East Globe School, and I do see, like, I, yeah, I'm looking at like some Palo Verdes over there, just, you know, kind of very, the dirt, you know, a lot of dirt and just, you know, some kind of a desert type of, uh, trees. Um, and then I was just trying to get a feel for the, you know, the character of that area, but, um, at least my thoughts, you know, looking at it here, it just, it does appear that, you know, that desert landscaping would be appropriate, um, but I don't know, with those recommendations that you were showing us there with, you know, the trees and all of that, is that something that the cit, that the city ordinance is, um, requiring? I guess, I didn't know how solid that kind of recommendation or was.
Thank you. Vice Chair Dernan, um, yes, the city and the state only allow drought-tolerant landscaping or ideally indigenous, but drought tolerant. Um, so I think the condition of approval also expresses, even though you install drought tolerant plants, you need to give them water or know that they're getting water for the, to establish them, their root system. Um, so I think it probably, uh, my condition probably, uh, recommends a six-month superficial grip where we know they're getting water, they have an opportunity to survive, but yes, ideally, it's all removed and they can just exist because we only want drought tolerant in Arizona or in our, in this particular climate. So that's one. Um, yes, our subdivision ordinance requires two trees per lot, as it says, this happens to be two lots, so we just set out, what's the difference? Uh, please know, in, in my time of planning, shade, especially for, uh, for businesses and in pedestrian areas, is very important for a lot of reasons, but really to make things comfortable for, for guests and encourage people to want to attend, uh, visit places with shade. Um, so that's the tree scenario. Shrubs, we can, we can go back and forth, I will let you know, yeah, you know, I don't think the city has a great example along US 60, um, in recent years of, with exceptions to the new, new development that's come in where they do locate, uh, plantings, but in look, looking at the, um, property to the north, our ordinance requires a 10-foot landscape setback between, uh, the asphalt or the sidewalk and the pavement, so, and that's, so the reason why in probably most of the 60 or our front door of the community, you'll see asphalt or dirt right up to the sidewalk or the curb because they just didn't require it in the past, um, or enforce it, which if it was required, it wasn't enforced, but, so that's why we're looking at that condition to the north. Um, so I think, you know, this is the first site plan, new construction you've seen, uh, that I've seen, uh, that's moving forward, uh, and I think there is an understanding that the way things were done in the past with not having landscaping versus going towards landscaping, uh, with our, with our current code, and that is a part of the requirement of the site plan review, is to look at landscaping. I think that quantity, it, it, you know, it's definitely the direction, um, the city should head if they want to beautify their front door for their front yard, the exposure to all the traffic coming through our community. But anyway, uh, that's up to you. If you don't like it, hey, you can go. I will let you know that, uh, areas without landscaping, there's a direct correlation between people's satisfaction and appeal to landscaping versus not landscaping, meaning that when there's landscaping, people tend to be more attracted to areas. Places with less landscaping, there was a study done by ASU a while back, um, are, is correlated with, uh, income level or a lower income, uh, when you have less landscaping. So there is an appeal there, there's been studies. Whatever you choose, please, uh, we'll make sure that we, uh, comply.
Thank you there, Dana. Are there any thoughts that you have on that there, Stacy, in terms of like what Dana mentioned? I don't know how much of that is new to you or, you know, from what you mentioned.
Right. So in respect to the shade of the trees, I agree with that, um, you know, initially I didn't plan on there be people hanging out outside, but I think that might happen, especially with the high school and the walk-up window, so it's probably not a bad idea to have shade, especially for them. With respect to where the two trees. Um, with respect to where the two trees are, that's, that's kind of what that would provide. I would probably just want to make sure that the trees weren't trees that grew so tall that you couldn't see the building, because the building is really small. So, I mean, I would have to be very, I, I would just need to be smart in what I, what I chose in that regard. Um, and, and for the shrubs, if they, if, you know, if I can put some cactus-type of shrubbery in, that's going to, going to be able to sustain without me having to water it over time, that will just be tolerant, drought-tolerant, for instance, I'm okay with that. And it would be nice if I didn't have to put a permanent irrigation system in, and, like, soaker hoses in the beginning to get them to root, and then I, you know, after that, I wouldn't have to worry about it as much. I'm, I'm perfectly okay with that. I planned on putting down, um, the, but I forget what it's called, the felt, the landscaping felt underneath the ground cover, so that I wouldn't have as much weeds to have to worry about as well, so, I, I mean, either way, I'm going to have to have a landscaper come in and do that either way, so I'm okay with that.
One thought that comes to mind, I spent a lot of time at Needers Cafe, um, they, you know, it's like a coffee shop, but I really liked their, their kind of, their desert-y kind of, I saw, like, Mexican Birds of Paradise, um, and they had some really pretty, um, they were just really big, palo verdes, you know, and they, they had this overhang, and they created this shade, and of course, when the seasons changed, and a lot of people would hang out, a lot of retirees would come and hang out out there. I know it's a different, you know, it's a different market, different place, but, um, I thought that they did a pretty neat job of, I think, at least, I get kind of inspired as I think about this, and, and I understand your concern too, uh, about that, having that tree in front of the business. Um, I would, yeah, I would, I would be concerned about that. Um, I think that there is enough of an angle view that people might get as they're cruising by, and they might be able to see between the two trees, but, yeah, I, I see your concern there.
My concern is the tree that's along the drive-through, directly in front of the...
Yeah, that one right there, right? Yeah, that's the one that I, I think too, yeah.
So I, I mean, if I, I, I would just have to be careful, like, because some palo verdes, uh, palo verde would have been my first choice either way. Um, some palo verdes can get fairly large, so I would just have to be careful on how I, what I picked.
Right there. Dana, is there any flexibility on that, the location of that particular tree?
Yeah, absolutely. The quantity is, uh, one thing, the location, you know, obviously, we want landscaping to be visible from the exterior of the property, they can, um, from the right-to-way, but yeah, of course. And, you know, actually, I would, I would suggest that it's better off on the, uh, west side. Of course, take the shade of that parking area, or of, I'm sorry, of the sidewalk, which we moved to the left. But either way, uh, I'm not particular, we'll just ask the applicants to make sure they're all along the frontages and out front, where we get the most, most bang for, for their buck.
Yeah, and I'm okay, because that, I would rather, I don't want people to see my storage shed. I would rather them see my coffee shop in the drive-through.
Oh, that would be a storage shed, okay, the little building to the left, okay, that's...
Right.
Yeah. But yeah, I think, uh, having flexibility where that's located, I think, yeah, that would be, that would be ideal, yeah, because I think, you know, I definitely want people to be able to see from, like, a marketing standpoint. Any other thoughts from my fellow commissioners?
I don't have anything further.
All righty, but, uh, with that, thank you so much, Stacy, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, and with that, um, we'll open it up for a, a discussion for commissioners, um, if there are any questions or comments that you gentlemen have at this time.
I don't have anything further.
I personally think, yeah, having, you know, the pictures there and the, the overlay, thank you, Dana, for having that, kind of the overlaying of the plan over the satellite image was really helpful, so I appreciate that. But, yeah, I think it looks pretty straightforward. Oh, uh, just one other question, um, here for you, Stacy, and I apologize, I didn't think about asking this, um, so I know that ADOT, you know, recommended that new, that ingress, egress, about how many cars do you think could, let's say, if that street right next door, I think it's Fourth Street or Fifth Street, um, if that were to get full and, you know, wrap around, let's say if you had a full drive-through, do you, I don't know if you had, like, an estimate about how many vehicles that might turn out to be?
So, in today's world, our vehicles are very different sizes. Uh, you know, we have smart cars, and we have really long trucks, so, um, with an average size of a car, the drive-through is going to be able to accommodate at least, at least six to eight vehicles, depending on the sizes of the vehicles. Um, just want to mention something I didn't get to mention before. I plan on having an app where people are going to be able to order their drinks ahead of time, and there'll be a curbside pickup, so that will very much help that stack-up. Um, and the being able to egress also into the alleyway will somewhat help that for the curbside pickup. So I don't know if you're seeing that part, but, um, when you come out onto Fifth Street, it's residential behind the location, if you can see that, and then there's Monroe Street. Um, so by the time, depending on where the cars are coming in, or, you know, whether they're traveling north or south, um, it's going to depend on the stacking in that regard, but you would probably only be able to safely have one or two cars waiting on Fifth Street to get in, um, before it starts to affect the neighborhood in a negative way. Uh, that, that's where I'm hoping to have the app and the curbside pickup be something that's helping that, in, in that way. Just so you know, also, in my purchasing of equipment and my menu items, I'm being very, very particular on how long it's going to take to make these items, uh, for that reason. I, that's the one thing I don't want, is it takes too long to get a coffee there. That's the exact thing I don't want. So, um, I'm trying to be as effective and productive as I can in, in buying the best equipment I can to make the fastest drinks that I can. I'm not making anything, like, I hate to say this, but nothing's going to be, like, homemade, like, if, um, for instance, I'm hanging, gonna have smoothies, but I'm not actually putting the real banana and the real strawberry, and the, and they're like these little fruit, like puree-type of things, where I just have to add the ice and things like that. So I believe that my intention of my menu items and my curbside pickup availability is going to help with that stack-up. Um, but, yeah, I, I think we can be safe to say that probably about six cars average could be able to fit.
Any questions or comments from fellow commissioners regarding that?
Bill, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, with that, um, if there are any other questions or comments, uh, if, I guess at this point, I'll just open it one last time for fellow commissioners, if there's anything else we wanted to discuss in regards to this. And then Dana, just another quick question. This was a, uh, so today, we are voting on, uh, let me take a look real quick here, to approve the site plan, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha.
It was a motion for action, to approve or deny, or to continue. Staff recommends you, motion to approve.
Right there. All right, with that, uh, gentlemen, we'll go ahead and, uh, open it up now for, so I can get a motion to approve the, uh, site plan for case SP dash 21 dash 01.
I'd like to make a motion to approve that.
Thank you, Commissioner Curran. And can I get a second on that?
Guys, second that motion.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Leester. All right, with that, uh, we'll go ahead and open it up for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, thank you. With that, we have a majority, so a motion passes. Thank you, and thank you for that, Dana, um, and Stacy as well, for all those details. And...
Just one quick question for Dana. Dana, this'll appear on the agenda, do you know?
Never. Planning and zoning commission is the final approval authority of site plan, so they can take a poop on this one.
There we go.
Perfect.
And thank you, Stacy, we're very excited.
Yes, we're excited. When can we expect some coffee?
You let me move dirt.
Yeah, gotcha. Is there any, have there been any, I guess, thoughts on that, or, like, or timeline set or anything like that, or?
My contractor is probably ready when I'm done.
Couple of weeks.
Really fast, quick, no building, the concrete, that's going to take a while.
Oh, gotcha, so it's a concrete that'll take a bit, wow. Exciting. Perfect.
Perfect.
Yes. I might even walk there and go over that cool overpass to get there, I like it. Perfect, well, thank you, everyone, and, yep, that, I believe that does it. Oh, yeah, oh, yes. Yeah, may I get a motion to adjourn this Planning and Zoning Commission meeting?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Thank you so much, Commissioner, and may I have a second on that?
Yeah, second that.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. All right, with that, all in favor of adjourned this meeting, say aye.
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 All right, with that, motion passes, so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much, gentlemen and ladies.